Good evening and welcome to the October 1st, 2012 Stanley County Board of Commissioners meeting in Stanley County. I'd like to call this meeting to order and welcome all that are in attendance tonight. I certainly appreciate you being here and look forward to your participation in the meeting, one way or the other. Some of you have items on the agenda and some perhaps are just here interested in what's going to go on. And certainly welcome Brian back with the Stanley News &amp; Press. I think he's getting his seat in the saddle here in Stanley County and we certainly welcome you. At this point in time, I would call on Commissioner and Vice Chairman Gene McIntyre for our invocation.
Hello, it's Frank. Dear Father, we thank you for today. We thank you for the privileges and the blessings you've bestowed upon us. We ask now that you bless this meeting that we might make decisions that would be in accordance with your will. These things we ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
I'm not aware of any adjustments we need to make to the agenda. If that's the case, I would certainly entertain a motion that we approve the agenda as presented. We have a motion, a second, motion by Commissioner Lauter, second by Commissioner Dennis. All in favor say aye. All opposed? Okay, so we will follow the agenda as presented. And our next, first item on the agenda is to discuss the Lake Tilory Marina No Wake Zone request. And our presenter will be our county manager, Andy Lucas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. This evening you have before you a public hearing. This is related to a request that you received at your September 4th meeting from the folks at Lake Tilory Marina asking for consideration of a resolution that they need in an application to the state's Wildlife Commission for consideration of a no-wake zone around the Marina area. So, that's the issue this evening and at your pleasure, you can open up the public hearing and take comments.
Okay, do any commissioners have any comments or questions at this time? Hearing none, I'll declare the public hearing open to hear comments concerning a Lake Tilory Marina request for a no-wake zone. If you're interested in speaking to that issue, appreciate if you'd come forward and identify yourself. Seeing no one here to speak on that topic tonight, I'll declare the public hearing closed and ask the commissioners if they would like to discuss at this point or if you have a motion that you'd like to make.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the request and the consideration of this resolution in support of this no-wake buoy.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Motion by Commissioner McIntyre, second by Commissioner Morton, and a favorable comment by Commissioner Dennis as well. Are there any questions or other discussion that we need to have at this time? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion say aye. Any opposed by the same sign? And the motion passes and I'm assuming, Mr. Manager, that we then will forward this resolution after it's signed to the appropriate individuals so that they can follow through with North Carolina Wildlife.
That's correct. They'll need the resolution. They'll also need the notice from the paper that we held the public hearing and that was advertised correctly to go along with their application. And most likely, we may work with them from a GIS perspective to give them the map the Wildlife Commission requires, a map of the designated area that they want for the no-wake zone.
Very good. Thank you so much. Second item on the agenda tonight is a presentation of two community development block grant applications and our presenter will be Michael Walser. Now, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and commissioners. This first public hearing is seeking your approval for a, for the, a middle of a grant application to the North Carolina Department of Commerce, Division of Community Investment for community development block grants, scattered site housing funding in the amount of $225,000. The county is in a three-year rotation, rotating cycle. You received this funding several times in the past. We've always, you've always been eligible for $400,000. Unfortunately, due to funding reductions, that amount has been reduced to $225,000. So, this is not a competitive cycle. We submit the grant application, it's funded. In addition to the public hearing, there is a authorizing resolution that would require action by the board tonight. I'd be happy to try and answer any questions that you might have.
Are there any questions by commissioners before we hold the public hearing? Seeing none, I would declare the public hearing open to consider the information we have, the grant application for the scattered site housing application. And I would ask that if anyone's here to speak on that topic, that you come forward and identify yourself and let us know your wishes on the issue. Again, seeing no one to speak to that, we declare the public hearing closed and I would entertain a motion from commissioners on the scattered site housing application.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the application and the, also do the associated resolution.
There was a motion by Commissioner Dennis to approve the submission of the grant application and sign the associated resolution. We have a second by Commissioner McIntyre. Anyone else have a question or comment? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion say aye. Any opposed? So, we will pass that and encourage you to go ahead and submit that application then.
Thank you.
And you have a second one, I believe.
Yes, sir. The second one is another CDBG grant application, also to the Department of Commerce. This is under competitive cycle under the Economic Catalyst Program. The maximum amount that can be applied for is $500,000. At this point, we don't think we need nowhere near that amount, but we're asking approval to submit this grant application, not to exceed the $500,000. And this would be for funds that'd be used to make improvements to the Stanley County Senior Center. There's a number of improvements that have been identified that are needs for the center and we'd like to submit this grant application in hopes that this is successful in getting this, getting this funding. And again, there's also a resolution that's attached that would also need approval by the board.
Okay, commissioners, any comment or question to Michael concerning this before we hold the public hearing? Only thing I'd say is, I remember when I came to work back in Alabama in 1975, we were playing basketball in that old army on that old floor and I'm tickled to death to see the replacement of the aging hardwood floor in the large multipurpose room may be a reality. It's been awhile. So, glad to see that. I'd like to declare the public hearing open to discuss submission of a grant application of the 2012 CDBG Economic Catalyst application. Anyone who wishes to speak to this item, I'd appreciate if you'd come forward and identify Again, seeing no one, I declare the public hearing closed and ask commissioners if you would like to make comments or a motion at this time.
I'd like a motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner McIntyre to approve and a second by Commissioner Dennis with a second favorable comment by Commissioner Morton at the same time. All in favor of the motion say aye. Any opposed? So, we look forward to the submission of this application and hope that things will move forward well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is, to hold a public hearing for the proposed 2013 Schedule of Values. And we have a presenter tonight, Malia Miller, with our Tax Administration Office to come forward and to explain to us a little bit more about this process. Welcome and appreciate you bringing your crew with you there.
Thank you, I did. I come before you tonight to ask you to hold the public hearing for General Statute 105-317 for the market value Schedule of Values and the present use value Schedule of Values that have been submitted. Notice of the public hearing has been advertised in the Stanley News &amp; Press, so I would ask at this time that you open the public hearing. If there are any questions, I have with me Leanne Lauter, Present Use Value Specialist, Charles Johnson, Real Property Supervisor, and myself.
Okay, and my understanding is this is the part of the process that we discussed at a previous meeting and we hold a public hearing tonight concerning the Schedule of Values. The commissioners will take no action tonight, but that will be put on the agenda at the next meeting.
That is correct. You'll be asked to adopt the Schedule of Values at the October 15th meeting.
Okay, very good. With that, I would declare the public hearing open to consider the proposed 2013 Schedule of Values and ask that if anyone is here to comment on that, that they come forward and identify themselves and speak to the issue. Again, seeing no one, I would declare the public hearing closed and as we said, the commissioner takes note, commissioners will take no action on this tonight, but we look forward to seeing you back at the, at the next meeting in October.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much. We have several items next coming from our Planning and Zoning Board and our presenter on these items will be Michael Sandy, Planning Director.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Board of Commissioners. Before you knight us, we have three public hearings. First item is a zoning amendment for Mr. Gus Shad, I mean, excuse me, for Ms. Mary Hinson. My paper in order. Ms. Mary Hinson's respectfully requests to rezone a portion of her property, or the entire part, balance of her property from RA to R20. Property is 1.37 acres, currently zoned RA, tax rate 11-506. Property is located at 17202 Frog Pond Road at the Woodfield Road intersection. Purpose of this request is to reduce the minimum lot size requirement to 15,000 square feet, which will allow the property owner to divide the property. The adjoining properties are zoned RA to the west, east, south, and north. Property is served by public water but not sewer. Is not located in a regulated flood plain or in a WS4 watershed. Traffic on this section of Frog Pond Road is approximately 500 cars per day per NC DOT. Planning Board recommended this request to commissioners at their last meeting due to its conformance to the land use plan and is in a growth area. Be glad to answer any questions.
Commissioners, do you have any questions at this time? Michael, I may have had just one. The information, the map are very good and I understand the purpose was to be able to transfer ownership of a portion of the property. The, would the two resulting pieces of property still be considered buildable lots?
That's correct. That's correct.
Both of them will still be.
In the previous zoning, or the current zoning now, if you divide it, the lot size area is not met. So, the request is a rezoning so they can lower the requirements of the lot size so they can divide it.
Okay, alright.
Mr. Hinson, the son of Mary Hinson is here and is also available to answer any questions.
I don't have any questions about the process, I just wanted to know whether that lot would still be available and usable with, after it was divided out.
That's correct.
Didn't see any other questions by commissioners, so I would declare the public hearing open and ask if anyone would like to speak to this issue, please come forward at this time. If you would just identify yourself so we know who we're hearing from.
My name is Terry Hinson and my mother is wanting to give me this little portion of land straight across the road from me so that, she's 83 and when she is deceased, that I will, it's always been promised to me, so I would appreciate it if y'all would. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate you being, coming before us tonight. Thank you. Anyone else that would like to speak to this issue? Seeing no one else, we declare the public hearing closed and ask for comments, questions, or a motion by the commissioners.
Chairman, I move we approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Motion by Commissioner Dennis, second by Commissioner Lauter to approve the rezoning request. Are there any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Any opposed by the same? That passes. Mike, you got another one?
Yes, sir, thank you. Next item is ZA 12-03, rezoning request of 16.31 acre tract of land from R20 to R8, tax record 17649. Property is located on South Business US 52 Highway, approximately 375 feet south of the intersection of Ross Drive. Purpose of this requested amendment is to allow for multifamily dwellings. The joint properties represent a mixture of zoning designations. RO to the southeast, General Highway Business District to the southwest, R8 to the northwest, and R20 to the northeast. The property is served by public water and sewer. The property is not, is not located in a regulated flood plain or the WS4 watershed. Traffic in this section of South Business 52 is, highway has not been studied since the new highway alignment's been installed, but it's approximately 3,000 cars per day by our best estimate. Planning Board favorably recommended this request to the commissioners due to the fact that property is located in the mixed-use zoning area and it's in a growth area in accordance with Stanley County Land Use Plan. Be glad to answer any questions.
Okay, commissioners, you've got the information in front of you. Do you have any questions of Michael at this time? And I would just again have one question, Michael. We're voting on the rezoning, but not, not the approval of the map or the development that we, the site plan.
Right.
We explained real quickly how that'll be handled later on?
Sure, I asked, Mr. Shad requested this rezoning, that he submit us a site plan just to have a concept of what this property would look like developed and he did that. You're correct, we cannot hold him to the site plan or anything that's on it. It's just for general purposes and information only. You know, he may come back with some changes. There's some parcels around there he might want to incorporate in this site at a later date, but he wanted to be sure that was something the commissioners wanted to change before he went further, from my understanding. But he did submit that, just for information.
Very good, thank you. I'd like to declare the public hearing open to consider the ZA 12-03 rezoning request and ask if anyone's here to speak tonight on this issue, just to come forward and identify yourself.
Thank you, Chairman Donovan, members of the board. I'm James Shad and I basically came up to answer any questions if you had any. Our goal is to, and I assume you all saw the map, right, the preliminary map. We want to build the senior apartments. We thought it was a good location for that. My father's partners with a group that has, that does this, this is what they do, and felt like it'd be a good, good location for that, that application. They're interested in coming down. We think it'd be good to bring some, some work to the area, some business to the area and also something that we don't have in Stanley County currently, so I don't have much to add. We did some site distances and things like that and, you know, there's 20, 2100 feet of sight going, heading north down 52 and then we have about 680 feet of sight going toward where it bends after the Lutheran home. We've got good site distance and I'm not sure of the traffic count. I guess Michael said there hasn't been a traffic count there in awhile, but we think it's a good location for this and if you have any questions, I mean, I'm more than willing to answer anything I can.
Thank you. Any questions at this time, Mr. Shad? Okay. No questions at this time then, thank you.
Well, thank you very much.
Is there anyone else who is present tonight that would like to speak to this issue? Seeing no one, I would declare the public hearing closed and ask for a motion by commissioners.
Mr. Chairman, I got, I had an opportunity to speak with Gus before he, when he had the idea of this and I thought it was a great idea and he is looking at incorporating some other land and everybody's got some urban renewal we'll have to do to it before he can get it cleaned up. He's got a fuel tank on it, we got to get it out of the ground, so he'll, he'll take care of that, but I think it's a good idea and I'd like to make the motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve this rezoning by Commissioner Dennis and a second by Commissioner Morton. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? We will approve that rezoning then. Thank you. You're up for your third, your third request tonight.
I just want to be sure you're ready. Public hearing tonight's been requested and advertised for proposed public minimum housing and high grass ordinance. We've done several presentations here before the commissioners and we had, now have you a draft copy before you with the minimum housing ordinance. There was been some minor tweaking. Ms. Fur and I have talked, we've had a few minor changes, mostly clarification ones. I'm not sure if she wants to comment or add to that, she can of course, but basically the ordinance is the same as what you've received in your packet two weeks ago.
Do we have any clarification points from either the manager or the county attorney at this time before we hold the public hearing?
All you, all you have to do is put that, Commissioner McIntyre, all you have to do is, is make that change while you're making motion and that, you know, those changes can be made at that time.
Ms. Fur, do you have anything that you would like to comment on before the public hearing?
Mr. Chairman, as Mr. Sandy stated, he and I made just a few tweaks in an effort to clarify a few of the sections throughout the ordinance. We could go through them, but I don't feel like it changes the true meaning, it just makes things more clear.
Given that, okay, Gene's got a question. Does that mean also from the state right away?
That is a property line, that's correct.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions of Mr. Sandy before we open the public hearing? Hearing none, I would declare the public hearing open to consider the adoption of a minimum housing ordinance for Stanley County and ask that if anyone's here to speak to this issue, that they come forward at this time. Seeing no one, I would declare the public hearing closed and ask if there are other questions, comments, or a motion that might be coming from county commissioners.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve this, but I would like to request that we reduce the grass height, the tall grass mowing to eight, to 12 inches instead of 18.
I believe that was found on page 10.
Page 10.
Part of what you asked about earlier, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we have one edit to change, recommendation, a motion to adopt with one change found on page 10. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Motion then by Commissioner McIntyre with a second by Commissioner Lauter. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion say aye. Any opposed? And we will approve this and this, the adoption will make this effective on January 1, 2013.
That's correct.
As part of the resolution that will be, will be signed as part of the approval process. Next item on our agenda, before I lose control completely up here, is, is to consider a Ward of Administrative Services contract for 2012 Urgent Repair Program, 2011 Single Family Rehabilitation Program, and the Duke Home Energy Loan Pool Program. And our presenter on this item is our county manager, Andy Lucas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. The reason we're taking this action, our current contractors for, or the ones we've had in the past, the ones who actually approved for these projects, these three projects previously worked for Hobbs &amp; Upchurch. They've since left Hobbs &amp; Upchurch as a result of some transition at that firm and have gone out and started their own firm. So, we felt it was necessary for us to terminate all existing contracts with Hobbs because we wanted to maintain our relationship with the three people. We based our decision on hiring Hobbs on the qualifications of the three people who, who worked for Hobbs at the time and so we didn't want anyone from, any other individuals from, at that point, not knowing and having a relationship with those folks from Hobbs to, so we elected to terminate and put it back out to bid for those three projects. And so, what you have this evening are the, the bid proposals and a formal, objective and somewhat subjective scoring sheet that we've used to try to evaluate these different proposals, which been reviewed and signed off on by our Utilities Director, Donna Davis. And so, we have that before your consideration this evening and we would recommend, based on the evaluation and the proposals received, that the, the award for administrative services be given to Carolina's Governmental Services LLC. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
So, commissioners, have any questions of the manager at this time? Hearing none, what's your pleasure? We have a motion by Commissioner Dennis to approve the, this administrative services contract, Carolina Governmental Services LLC. We have a second by Commissioner McIntyre. All in favor say aye. Any opposed by the same sign? Thank you so much. Next item on the agenda is to consider appointments to a subcommittee that will be discussing West Stanley Sewer and our presenter on this is Andy Lucas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. The towns of Locust, Oakboro, and Stanfield are currently reviewing their existing sewer services agreement for western Stanley County and the county actually has, is, is part of a separate agreement with the town of Oakboro for sewer services in the Ridgecrest, Running Creek area. And so, we've been also invited to participate in these conversations, this review of the current contract and what things may need to be in a, in any future contracts. And so, fellow, staff felt it was important that the board be represented in these meetings, not only, just, not only staff, but the board as well. And so, we're recommending the appointment of two members to a subcommittee to represent County, Stanley County at these meetings. The first meeting will be the 16th of October at 5:00 PM at this Crutchfield Center in Locust, but it's anticipated there'll be several additional meetings after that first one. And so, we would, we would appreciate your consideration of having two members appointed and certainly, you know, if two members couldn't appoint, attend the first meeting, there'll certainly be additional meetings and staff plans to be present as well and we can certainly report back at a future meeting as to the results of, and how things are going. So, with that, I'll answer any questions.
Are there any questions at this time for, for our manager? Or any, any discussion about this information these provided?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion
Okay.
To appoint you to serve on this and also Commissioner Dennis.
Okay. We have a, a motion to appoint Commissioner Donovan and Commissioner Dennis. Do I have a second?
I have a question. Is that just that person or the chairmanship? Is that, are you saying whoever's chairman or specifically Mr. Donovan? In other words, if something-
They're appointing two people, we're not naming the chairmen.
I know, but, I know.
No.
That's what I was asking, yeah. Just clarification.
Commissioner.
Okay.
I believe that's it.
Yeah, okay, you did.
And I would ask for a point of order. Question is, is it, Mr. Dennis has said that he cannot second that appointment or that motion because he is, he's-
I'll second.
And by the same time, okay.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, alright. So, we have a motion to appoint two members of the, of the board, Commissioner Donovan, Commissioner Dennis, to serve on this subcommittee. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. You have that information ahead of you, in front of you and I would entertain a motion to either approve or to make changes in that. We have a motion by Commissioner Dennis to approve the consent agenda as-
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner McIntyre, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, by the same side. Thank you. That's a pointed question. Next item on the agenda is, um, a time of public comment, and I would invite anyone who wishes to speak to commissioners to, uh, come forward at this time. Seeing no one, um, we would move next to an item on the agenda for general comments and announcements, and, um, I will start to my left this evening with Commissioner Morton. If you have anything that you would like to, uh, comment on at this time.
No comments.
Uh, Commissioner McIntyre.
No comment.
Go all the way to my right to Commissioner Dennis.
No comments.
And Commissioner Lauder.
No comment, thank you.
We have discussed the, uh, the potential of changing, um, uh, our next meeting date, and, um, I know, I know that, uh, Commissioner Morton, uh, is scheduled to be out of town on October the 15th, um, and I actually will, will be in the area, but I would entertain a motion if, um, if you'd like to change our meeting date to October the 22nd.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to change our October, next October meeting date to October 22nd from the 15th.
We have a motion by Commissioner McIntyre and a second by Commissioner Dennis to change the meeting date to October 22nd. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The other thing that I would just, um, uh, mention, I think, tonight as a comment is, and I've done this, uh, most recently on, um, WSBC radio, when the commissioners have the opportunity to talk about things, and, uh, what I've said is, I, I really believe that this group of commissioners is, is doing a good job. And, uh, uh, we have looked at some things, and even here, as a presentation of the information that was presented on the radio the other day, uh, there's a lot going on right now that is very positive for Stanley County, uh, not the, the least of which is, um, our current, uh, financial rating and our current fund balance situation. Uh, I think that we are, um, as good or better than we've been, uh, in four years. And, uh, as, as we've put in, uh, approximately 65 miles of waterline, as we've completed a, a terminal at the airport, um, as we've, uh, replaced, uh, uh, equipment for our EMS people, um, and especially the sheriff's office, we still remain in an excellent, uh, financial position. And, um, I know that, um, the election is around the corner, uh, but I, I didn't want to miss the opportunity to thank the current commissioners for what you're doing and, and what that means to our community. And I would announce tonight that the early voting does start on October the 18th. Uh, that will be now before our next meeting on October the 22nd, and I would encourage the, um, individuals in Stanley County to, to research, um, carefully, uh, the information that's out there, and, uh, encourage you to begin, um, uh, preparation for your voting, and the opportunity exists to vote, uh, at several places around the county, uh, beginning October the 18th. Uh, comments by the manager?
No comments, sir, thank you.
Comments by the attorney?
No comment, thank you, sir.
Okay, very good. At this time, um, consider a motion to go into closed session to consult with the county attorney, uh, to discuss a potential lawsuit, uh, to discuss the 401 water quality permit intervention, APGI's public records lawsuit request, and to discuss economic development. Have a motion from Commissioner Dennis.
Second.
Second by Commissioner McIntyre. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're in closed session.[1776.04]